To order, okay. Here we go.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board Secretary has forwarded notice of this meeting for advertising by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Secaucus Town Hall on the bulletin board at Education Administration Building, as well as notice being provided to the Bergen Record, Jersey Journal, and District website.
Flag, salute.
The flag of the United States of America to the Republic of which is one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. De Ombre?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Kish?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. De Ombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, so tonight on the agenda, I'm gonna kind of skip around a little bit, but on the agenda for tonight, we will be voting on appointing the new superintendent for the Secaucus School District. So what I'm gonna do is I have a statement that's prepared that's going to kind of outline what we did in the superintendent search process, and then I will introduce our candidate. Right? So over the past several weeks, we have received emails from teachers and staff expressing opinions on the superintendent search. We want to take this opportunity to address these emails and explain the search process that brought us to where we are today. This Board of Education is committed to communication and transparency. We applied this focus to how we conducted the superintendent search. There was discussion early on as to whether the Board should be, should spend money on the search firm or undertake this process on its own. Ultimately, the Board voted to conduct a professional search specifically because not doing so would have denied our teachers, staff, families, and other community members the opportunity to provide input on the selection of the next superintendent. To solicit feedback from the community on what qualities and characteristics they were looking for in the next superintendent, surveys were sent out to families, teachers, and community members. These surveys were sent out via email blast and Connect Ed. Additionally, there were meetings with each subgroup to allow for more extensive questions and discussions. Of the two hundred-plus teachers and staff, twenty-six completed the survey. Approximately half of those who completed this, the survey took the opportunity to express support for selecting an internal candidate. For parents and community members, there were fifty-seven responses to the survey. In addition to the surveys, teachers, staff, and family always had the opportunity to send the Board members, the Board emails or to speak at Board meetings. Prior to last week, only one staff, only one staff member emailed us with input into the superintendent search. The Board's decisions were based on the information it received from our stakeholders. All the information offered by families, teachers, staff members, and other community members through the surveys was absolutely considered as we moved through the search process. Even the emails we received at the end of the process were discussed and considered before the final decision was reached. I want to take a moment now to discuss the emails that expressed support for Dr. Reiser. First, I want to thank everyone that took the time to write to us. To receive support and praise from colleagues speaks volumes to the strength of Dr. Reiser's character, the bond she has built with administrators, teachers, and staff, and the respect she has garnered in her many years in the district. We owe Dr. Reiser an enormous debt of gratitude for the tremendous role she played in getting our district back on track during one of the most challenging times we have faced as a district. Going into the search, we knew how important this decision was to the district and to the entire community. Many teachers expressed concern about the risks of choosing an external candidate. Many said our recent history illustrated those risks. While we considered our recent history, we were focused on a single mission: choosing the right candidate for the Secaucus School District. The Board pored over the candidates' resumes, their experience, and their academic achievements, and through the interview process, the Board considered to be equally important whether the candidate had the demonstrated ability to gain the respect and support of our school community. To that end, we received twenty-eight resumes, selected nine candidates, and conducted thirteen interviews, and undertook many reference checks over the course of three weeks. We are here tonight to vote on a candidate we believe to be the most qualified to lead Secaucus School District, and the Board is unanimous in its decision and support of Dr. Alfonso. Dr. Alfonso will have an opportunity to introduce himself tonight, but before he does, the Board felt it was important for you to hear what the Board saw in him and why we chose him. Dr. Alfonso came into his interviews with an energy and passion for his work that we had not seen in any candidate we interviewed. He not only had great ideas for addressing a wide range of issues from student discipline to learning loss, he had implemented those strategies successfully in his district. Dr. Alfonso also put a premium on building relationships with parents, teachers, staff, and the community. In the time he has been in the Wagoner School District, he grew to be a valued member of the district and community, to the point that they did not want to let him go. We know that you will welcome Dr. Alfonso to our district and that in partnership with our extraordinary staff, our students will continue to achieve at the highest levels of excellence. And now, it is my privilege to present to you Dr. Eric Alfonso. Sure.
Since we have one side, I think we could do this ninety-degree look.
We could turn over, bro.
Oh, hello. You can see back there. So first of all, let me just commence by saying thank you to the Board for your trust in the selection, and I'd like to greet all of you as superintendent candidate for tonight. So just to give you a little background on myself educationally, which is the boring stuff we like to get out of the way. I achieved my bachelor's at K University. My first master's was at Ramapo College. I continued my doctoral studies at Seaton Hall, and then as of last year, at December twenty-twenty-two, I completed my MBA back at Ramapo, where I'm currently serving as a professor of the graduate program for educational leadership. So as far as a person, I've been a Hutton County resident my entire life, and growing up as a resident between Union City and West New York, Secaucus was the place to be. Secaucus, Secaucus was the diamond for us. It was the place where I would beg my parents to let me go to on Friday, Saturday night, and some of my fondest memories growing up, Secaucus is truly a landmark of them. Particularly, our Sunday dinners at Sizzler's, which we now know as Chili's, and more importantly, where the moment that Secaucus truly became a special place to me, it was just at the age of twelve. I was playing the district Little League Tournament, and our bus drove into the Secaucus field. The first thing myself and my teammates said were, wow. The streets were clean, everything was well-lit, and the amount of support that our children had was nothing like I had ever seen as a twelve-year-old, even to this day. I played first base, had a chance to look over at the stands, and the stands were overflowing. It was evident that the support that our students, our twelve-year-olds had wasn't only of the parents and the immediate relatives, it was of the entire community. It was a communal support for our twelve-year-olds. And I thought to myself as I was twelve years old, this is where I want to be. So it seems almost poetic to be standing here in front of you today, coming full circle and working alongside you to lead this amazing community that I grew up to praise since the age of twelve. So I want you to rest assured that as a superintendent, I truly believe first and foremost in the safety of our children and providing an inclusive and diverse learning experiences for our students and providing our staff with the resources to provide these experiences for our students. It is said that it takes a village to raise a child, and successful schools are built upon quality rapport and partnerships with our community, our parents, and our stakeholders. That being said, as soon as my appointment is effective, that is my number-one priority to establish these partnerships, to build these rapport, to build these relationships, and get to know the community as a community itself. Because you are the representation, you are the backbone, and you are the foundation of our students, who are our future, who it is our responsibility to build up as role model citizens and contributing members to our community. I look forward to meeting and working with each and every one of you. I truly do not sleep, so I will be available at all times to assist and support you as a community, as a staff, in any of the needs. I truly wholeheartedly believe in educating the whole child. The whole child is just that, the whole child, mentally, physically, spiritually, academically. And I feel like the trajectory that Secaucus has been, the reputation that Secaucus has built throughout the years, it's second to none. My, myself, as a twelve-year-old, knew the special places this was, and now in discharge, I will make sure that we continue to progress and set our sights on joint efforts and joint initiatives to provide the best quality education for our students. Thank you so much for your warm welcome, and thank you for your time.
Organization reports.
Good evening, I'm Rob Valente, Principal of Huber Street School. Please forgive my appearance, I was just coaching at my son's Little League game. I left during the top of the fourth, they were tied at three. On Thursday, my son actually got the base hit to tie it up in the bottom of the third, so it was exciting. On Thursday, March thirtieth, fifth-grade students at Huber Street School presented their Lego Mission to Mars projects for a group of experts in this field. Some of the judges that helped to critique their hard work were Dale Evansen, Jennifer Modi, John Kaplan, and Don Evansen. Students worked together in teams to help create their version of a variety of NASA-related space items such as rovers, helicopters, satellites, aliens, and even habitats on Mars. Special thanks to Mr. Alan Bonan for organizing this special event. The Nimbus School of Arts Dance to Learn Program held their culminating final show on April fifth. All of our second graders participated in this fun and educational dance program. That same day, many of our fourth and fifth graders participated in the science fair. Students presented their projects to judges. Thank you to Mrs. Ricky DiGirolamo for bringing back this great event. Heading into spring break, Ms. Brittany Yanetti organized the first annual Huber Street School Basketball Tournament. Students in fourth and fifth grade represented their homerooms and competed against each other in a fun day of hoops. Last night, the Huber Street School Dance Club performed for their parents. The students put on a fantastic show that our students will get to see tomorrow. Thank you to Mrs. Stephanie Ramos and Mrs. Ricky DiGirolamo for running this great program. Earlier today, our students were treated to a performance of Gwendolyn the Graceful Pig by the Liberty Ballet Company. The author of the children's book by the same name, David Rottenberg, narrated the story while the performers danced their way through the story. Our students had a wonderful time. Huber Street School will be hosting our second book fair of the year, beginning next week. Next Friday, our second graders will be performing at Claritin School, and our fifth graders will be cleaning Schmitz Woods in honor of Arbor Day. The first week of May will be the start of the NJSLA testing for our third, fourth, and fifth graders. Mr. Alan Bonan has organized the Treps program for our fifth graders this year. Students have been preparing their products and sales pitches for months. The students will present their projects on the evening of May ninth at Huber Street School. April twenty-sixth is Administrative Professionals Day. Our school, Huber Street School, will not function nearly as well without the hard work and dedication of Kim Pascarello and Colleen Mason. They're absolutely wonderful. Looking back, on Monday, March twenty-seventh, we hosted a special evening event for parents to inform them about the dangers and pitfalls that children face in having smartphones and social media. In addition, we provided parents with some tools to help them navigate these difficult waters. This great event could not have happened without the help of Mrs. Kelly O'Connor and Mrs. Michelle Martinelli-Worst. Thank you to Felicia Lott, Chrissy Candela, Dr. Danielle Garzone, and Pat Kikuchi for their help as well. While the topics discussed were difficult conversations to have, I believe that they're of the utmost importance. Lastly, I hope to see you all here at the Arthur F. Couch Performing Arts Center on Wednesday, May tenth, for the Huber Street School Spring Concert. While the concert is always amazing, this year's show is extra special, as it will be the final concert of Mrs. Joni Namira's career, which spans back to Richard Nixon's presidency. We are hoping to pack the house to show Mrs. Namira how much she has meant to our school and our students. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Danielle Garzone, Principal of Claritin School. This month has definitely been exciting, especially with the start of the Claritin PTA Booster-Thon Glow Run Event. Beginning on March twenty-seventh, students and staff enjoyed seven days filled with lessons about confidence, curiosity, humility, endurance, and resolution. The Booster-Thon team organized daily missions for students while incorporating ways to be a friend to all. Throughout the week, as students reach their goal, they receive fun rewards such as cool prizes, watching staff members walk around the building in costumes, and mummifying their teachers. On April fourth, staff and students participated in the PTA Booster-Thon Glow Run and won incentives such as pieing their teacher in the face, and of course, the grand prize of sliming me. Claritin School surpassed their fifteen-thousand-dollar goal, and not only did I get slimed once, but twice. You can check out some of the videos and pictures from the events on the Claritin Facebook and Twitter page. Thank you to our incredible PTA for organizing this fundraiser and to everyone for their support. On March thirty-first, our second-grade Bs put on a performance for the entire school. For the past few months, our second-grade students have been working hard practicing their dance routine for the Nimbus Dance to Learn Showcase. This year's theme was emotion and how students can show emotions through dance. Our students were incredible, and we are very proud of them. We hope to continue this incredible program. On April fifth, fourth and fifth-grade students took part in the annual Claritin School Science Fair. The students chose projects and followed the scientific method for topics that interest them. Thank you to Ms. Weigert, our Science Fair Coordinator, for organizing such a wonderful event. Thank you to all who participated, and congratulations to our first, second, and third-place winners. You all did an incredible job. Throughout this week, the Claritin PTA hosted the annual Spring Book Fair. Thank you to our PTA for setting up this event. Our students had a great time walking through the book fair, selecting books, and different prizes to bring home with them. Some upcoming events: On April twenty-sixth is Administrative Professional Day. I've truly been blessed to work with amazing professionals who work together as a family alongside me to ensure that the building runs as smoothly as it does, because without them, I wouldn't be able to function. Thank you to Erica Demaze and Sharon Lowly for all that you do. You are both incredible. On April twenty-eighth, Claritin School will be hosting the annual Arbor Day celebration. Students from Claritin and Huber Street School will be performing at the event. Our fifth graders on that same day will also be going to Schmitz Woods to participate in our Arbor Day cleanup. NJSLA testing for ELA in math for students in grades three to five will begin the week of May first. NJSLA science testing for students in grade five will take place on May sixteenth and seventeenth. And finally, on May twelfth, is Claritin's Spring Chorus Band and Recorder Concert. The event will be held here at the PAC Center at six-thirty PM, and we can't wait and hope to see everyone there. Thank you and have a great evening.
Good evening, Christine Candela, Principal of Secaucus Middle School. I swear it's just allergies, so I'm not getting anybody sick. I want to start with in breaking news, Mr. Valente's son Bruce's team just won eight to three. I was asked to give that information because everybody here is very in tune with that game. On Thursday, March ninth, forty-nine, forty-nine, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, students of middle school theater, theater field trip made their way across the river to see Aladdin on Broadway. The students had an amazing time with their advisor, Ms. Moore, and are already looking forward to the next, to next year's show. On Wednesday, April fifth, the middle school SGO, under the guidance of their advisor, Ms. Pomisano, hosted a social gathering event for all seventh and eighth graders called the Spring Kickoff. Students were encouraged to come in spring casual attire as they enjoyed a pizza dinner and took part in exciting games and activities while dancing to the latest tunes. Gift cards to the Carnegie Diner and Jersey Mike's were also given out to the winners of three-round Jeopardy! Tournament, as well as a Nintendo Switch Tournament. These are very important things in middle school. Once again, we are extremely proud of one of our SMS patriots, a Hodgkin's lymphoma cancer survivor, Franco Monica, Monica, who recently raised thirty-one thousand six hundred and one dollars for Jam Cancer in the Can at Franco Strong Hockey Tournament. Twenty-one teams from New York and New Jersey participated in the month-long event, and it was a huge success. The proceeds of this event allowed Jam Cancer in the Can to ease the financial burdens faced by the families affected by cancer. The Patriots had a special jersey made in lavender, which represents the colors of the Hodgkin's Lymphoma Society, and hockey fights cancer. Next Thursday, April twenty-seventh, is Take Your Child to Work Day. We ask that if any student in the middle school will be celebrating this day with their parents or guardians, that they please fill out the Google form we sent home by Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, indicating your child's name, grade, and where they will be working for the day. This can also be accessed via our Facebook page. Middle school track and field has begun, and we have a huge turnout this year. Coach Curry and Coach Culligan would love to see fans at either their first away meet at New Milford High School on April twenty-seventh at four PM, or at their first home meet on May second here at our track at four PM. On Friday, May fifth, the Secaucus Middle School PTO will be hosting their annual Tricky Tray. It will begin at six PM and be held in the Blue Gym. This Tricky Tray will operate a little differently from years past, as it will be a silent auction. This means that all the baskets drawn will not be announced live. Guests will have time to drop their tickets in their bags of choice, and after the levels close down, a PTO member will draw a ticket and bring it to the winner. This will enable the Tricky Tray to move along more quickly and efficiently. As always, we welcome donations for this event, and we hope to see you all there on Cinco de Mayo. There is a link to purchase tickets on our Facebook page, and you can also contact our secretary and PTO Vice President Jade Dalton for tickets. Our testing schedule for grades six, seven, and eight will begin in May. All students will begin ELA and math assessments the week of May fifteenth to the nineteenth, and only eighth grade will take the NJSLA science that week. Some other important middle school dates coming up this, coming up next month: Our sixth graders will be going to Medieval Times on May ninth, and our seventh graders will be going to I Play on the eleventh. Our annual spring concert is May sixteenth at seven PM, and our Drama Club show, Beauty and the Beast Junior, will be at six-thirty PM on the nineteenth. Both of those events will be held in the PAC. Found in the event that all our eighth graders eagerly await will take place on May twenty-fourth, and this is our annual dinner dance hosted by the PTO in the Blue Gym. In closing, I'd like to wish all who celebrate a blessed Eid, and thank you and have a great rest of your evening.
Matt, can I get a new microphone in case Chrissy was really sick? Only kidding, Matt. Good evening, good evening, everyone. Steve Vignani, Principal of Secaucus High School. First, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Alfonso, welcome to the Secaucus School District. April sixth marks the end of marking period three, and grades will be available on the parent portal to view on April twenty-fourth. Congratulations to the cast and crew of the school musical prom. Paige was a part of that, along with their director, Ms. De La Cruz. Each year, I'm very, very impressed with the amount of talent that our students possess, from singing to dancing, being able to memorize all those lines. They really did an excellent, excellent job. I'm not sure if you realize this, but so many of the lead roles were played by freshmen, so I'm excited to see what the future holds for the Theater Department. Our junior students had a great time at their prom on March twenty-third. Class advisor, Mr. Mahia, and Mrs. McLaughlin worked extremely hard, making sure that the venue was decorated beautifully, and it was an overall success. We also had about twenty-six teachers who chaperoned that event, so that made it even more enjoyable, and they volunteered their, their time that night, so it's wonderful to see. We're approaching testing season at the high school. May first, we have NJSLA grade-nine math testing. On May second and third, we have NJSLA English, that's grade-nine also, and May tenth and eleventh is NJSLA science. And from May first to May twelfth, we have about thirteen AP exams scheduled. And if that's not enough, we'll also be offering the SAT to our juniors, and that will take place at the high school on Saturday, May sixth. The deadline to register, register for that has passed, but we are offering another opportunity on Saturday, June third. The deadline to register for that administration is May fourth. Interested students are encouraged to log on to the collegeboard.org to sign up, and we encourage them to talk to their counselors if they have any questions. Our sales students, along with their advisor, Ms. Lee, will be preparing for their senior citizen prom, which will be held on the twenty-seventh. That's right here in the upper PAC. That's the senior citizen prom, not the senior prom. The music selection is a little different from the, from each other. We'll be looking forward to welcoming our, our local senior citizens back. This was a staple at the high school for many years pre-COVID, so we're happy that we have so many interested participants. We have over a hundred senior citizens who will be attending. And Dr. Light and the National English Honor Society students will be holding their first annual Poetry Cafe Night that will take place tomorrow, so we're looking forward to hearing some creative poetry. And the beginning of this month, that was April third to the seventh, was Assistant Principals Week, so I want to take a moment to recognize Mrs. Wargaki and Mr. Kikuchi for their critical role that they play in supporting our students, both academically and on a personal level. Thank you. They are vital members of our, our leadership team. They help shape the culture and the success of our school community. I want to thank them for the countless hours that, that they dedicate to our students, not only during the school day, but athletic events, social events, performances, concerts, ceremonies. We're very fortunate to have them. Thank you.
Student representative?
Good evening, everyone. I hope we're all doing well after our break last week. I don't have too much to say tonight, but I have some good news, so that's always great. As mentioned in the past meetings, the clocks for classrooms have come in and were waiting to be replaced. Well, you, like you said, they were replaced over break, and teachers came up to me and said, yay! So they're very appreciative of this, and now I'm excited that the clocks are working again. Coming up this weekend is the annual JSA Spring State Convention. That will be two days, April twenty-second and April twenty-third, but it is not an overnight event. Students will be going on a bus to Somerset, New Jersey this weekend for the convention. And my final development that I want to bring up to you is for the theater program. As you know, and hopefully attended, the high school in partnership with the middle school put on their school put on their annual spring musical this year, being the prom. Each night, the performances, each night of the performances, the audience seemed to be thrilled and really enjoyed the show, but the size of the audience decreased each night. And if you think about audience size before the pandemic and compared it to after, there has been a decrease in attendance. Now, if you're wondering why I'm bringing this up, I recalled from a couple meetings ago, the school's budget was being re-looked at and reorganized, and I think it could be very beneficial for the theater program if funds could be allocated to this vital program within the schools. I have been informed that the theater program is an independent program, but it is truly hard to keep this program thriving when we have to face troubles of paying for rights to shows, costumes, mics, and sets, and more. These expenses are not cheap, and due to the lack of funding, this causes the productions to not always perform or look the best the way that they can amongst audiences. And as an example, how many of you had heard of the prom before the high school chose for it to be the school, the show this year? So yeah, like not many, right? And that's totally fine, but it's not that popular of a show. And due to its brief time on Broadway and being set in recent times does not make audiences become familiar with it. If the budget is reorganized and could allocate funds to the theater program, then rights to more popular shows could be purchased and ease the cost worry for the program faces each year for the components of putting on the show. So I'm here asking you to try and find some money in the budget to put into a theater program that can regrow in population and continue to flourish for years to come and be as successful as Wee Hawkins shows are. Wouldn't it be amazing to have Whoopi Goldberg or Lin-Manuel Miranda come see our shows? They went to Wee Hawkins Productions this year for Sister Act and in past years for productions of In the Heights. That is a very big accomplishment and must mean that their productions of shows must have been very nice if first celebrities to have attended. And I feel our productions could get there from funding from you. I'm hoping that you take time to consider these thoughts and find some money to put towards a theater program. Thank you.
Thank you. Correspondents?
No correspondents.
Acting Superintendent Report?
Okay, I'd like to excuse Paige because she has some AP prep to do, so please, Paige, if you will. She asked. I didn't tell her to go. She asked. First, first things first, I'd like to welcome Dr. Eric Alfonso. I really look forward to, you know, reverting back to my director-curricular-instruction position and working with you, so welcome. I have a short slideshow. So my acting superintendent report tonight will focus on our last DIAC meeting. We had one on March 29th. We had a new group of staff members as, as, you know, suggested by the SEA. We will have another group come in in June to discuss more relevant issues in each school building. So, so we discussed new topics that this, this month that were not discussed in previous meetings. The next meeting will be on June 14th, 2023. So Claritin School, I'm going to run down the list of issues and the kind of resolutions that we came to, both at the meeting and after the meeting. So bathroom security during lockdown drills, there was a question about whether the stalls could lock or the bathrooms could lock if students are stuck there through lockdown drills. So buildings and grounds, this was given to buildings and grounds, we are looking into this to make sure that the safety and security of students is, is, is the... So many of the new hires are feeling a little overwhelmed, aren't we all? However, I did say that, you know, our new teacher orientation, we usually have a few different meetings throughout the school year, however, the past two years, we were missing an administrator, so it was very difficult to keep doing that the way I wanted to, you know, being periodically throughout the school year. I will bring that back as, as soon as our administrative team is at a hole again, definitely we'll bring that back next year. We will have multiple meetings for the new teachers, and if new teachers need the support, I will invite the teachers that were new last year to join these meetings as well. Completion of the Claritin fence project. So just so you know, the town and the fire department met with the buildings and grounds and the architects to develop a plan to reach the schools in case of an emergency. So this is basically fire department truck accessibility to the building, just in case something happened. They have to get to the building in a, in a way that's, that's safe. It's progressing. We hope to have the fence completed in summer months. Egress through the fence, that was a good, that was a good concern that the Claritin School faculty had, how we can, how are we getting out? Are we going to be trapped in this fence once it's built? No, of course not. We are, we have egress through the fence, through pushbars, so in case of an emergency, everybody would be able, able to exit. Fourth teacher for each grade level at Claritin, similar to Huber Street. So technically, grade levels at Claritin have fewer students, and that's why certain grade levels, I believe, grade one and grade four, right now have three teachers for each grade level. Next year, because of the increase in population going to the 5th grade, we are, we're adding, budget permitting, right? Adding a 5th grade teacher for Claritin School, so that would be kind of, we'll take care of one teacher there, and we're working on getting what we need going forward. ELL population in the school, the ELL population in the district has been increasing significantly, and we have actually found a way to add another ESL teacher to the budget also. And that would be primarily for the middle and high school, however, we are working out a plan with supervisors to see if this can also help at the elementary level. I'm not guaranteeing it, but we are looking into this. Huber Street, class coverage is still an issue, as it is around the state. We are looking into, substitutes are still an issue, all right? Getting, getting the fill rate, our fill rate still hovers around 40%, which is the fill rate for the state. So we are, we are looking into a substitute service. We actually had a meeting with the substitute service at our last operations meeting, and we are looking into that further. We just need to get more information regarding that. A social study series, they'd like a social study series at the elementary school. I think what they have is dated, so just so you know, next year, we're going to fully fund with the help of the ARP grant, a K-2 reading program, which, which has been asked for, for a few years now. Next year, the year after that, it's a math renewal or a math, looking into another math program. So that's for the next two years, it's going to be pretty tight in terms of budget-wise, in terms of getting a new series, but we will look into alternates for that. The first grade team doesn't have a designated PLC time. That will definitely be fixed when we go into scheduling for next year. Millridge, Millridge had a very long list of, of, of concerns, but they, you know, to their defense, they didn't have any concerns, I think, one or two last time. So COVID rules, they wanted to know, when a teacher gets it, does it still apply? Could they just come in if they feel better? No. We have our safe return language. We have to abide by that safe return language for the course of the year unless something is, is changed when it comes to, you know, rescinding certain, certain policies regarding that. Can staff members go unpaid for religious holidays instead of using personal days? They could, they have that option to either use personal days or unpaid days. Right now, sick days are not applicable, cannot be used to take religious holidays because the person is not sick, when a person is not personally sick, unfortunately. Is the water cooler safe at, at Millridge School? Yes, the water cooler is safe at Millridge School. We, there was many, many things done over the course of the last year. It once had lead when we first acquired the building. There is no more lead. It has been inspected by the state and is safe for consumption. The buildings are not as sanitized as they used to be. We will look into that with buildings and grounds, and CAs are not being retained. Again, that, that's an issue about, you know, we're having trouble getting CAs. However, we, we have had a few come in, and some are leaving. And, you know, we're, again, that's something that is kind of out of our control right now, but we are just trying to get more for the classrooms. Okay, so climate of the school's staff members, so that will be discussed by administration. Issues will be addressed if there were any issues. I didn't want to bring up the specific issues, but, you know, they were having a few issues with the climate, so we will discuss that with the administration. Teacher staff would like more nonviolent crisis intervention training, so that is on the, on the agenda for these PD in September. It always is, and we will have that periodically throughout the school year. Now, with our next year's calendar, we have a lot more half-days throughout the school year, so this is a perfect time to add more of those trainings periodically throughout the school year so we can get everybody trained. CPR training needs, same thing. We will be offering that in September and throughout the school year. Those half-days for PD are great times to offer the CPR training that's, that's very much needed. Classroom aid training in September, same thing. More items to include were discussed in this meeting. And pre-K would like to have specials for their students, so administration will discuss this in future planning. They would like to be included in Huber Events. Again, administration will discuss this for their next school year. I think they were, there were specific ones, so I will bring up the list and we will, we will talk about that. Pre-K secretary has been removed from the building, so just remember, Millridge is an annex of Huber Street Schools, so their secretaries can handle any issues. The, the kind of issue should be kind of addressed right to the Huber Street Secretaries, and the Special Service Secretary in the building also could handle minor issues brought to her. Middle school coverage issues, again, something we're dealing with, I think all the state is dealing with. Schools at capacity, yes, yes, it is. So this is something that is going to be discussed. I will, just so everybody knows, we are having our reorganization committee. We are, I, I just met with Ms. Yeo to, you know, discuss a date and time and, and members for the reorganization committee. So as soon as Mr. Lewis gives me, you know, the board members that will be on that, I will, you know, send out an invitation for that, and we will get going with that. So this is something that has to be discussed. It's, it's, we are at capacity at the middle school. We're working on a solution to that. Social study resources is needed, so I will speak to Ms. Kniff about that and see what we can do about it. Reading interventions, we will look into, and the issue was that we, a few years ago, when we were cut in Title I funding, when everything was, when everybody was offered free lunch, the free and reduced lunch applications dramatically decreased, and that depends, that basically dictates our Title I funding. So what happened was, we lost the basic skills teachers, so some of our, so at least, the fewer students that we had were ELA middle school. So I'm looking to kind of reinstate that or use Title I funding because the free and reduced lunch applications have increased. I, I feel our funding will increase for next year, and I won't know that until the beginning of June, unfortunately, but if we, if the funds allow, I will talk to Ms. Yeo, and maybe we can hire a part-time reading specialist for the, for the middle school. Chromebooks are dated for students? Well, you're in luck because we're getting new Chromebooks next year. The lease is up. We have to renew Chromebooks, and we are looking for a faster, faster model for the students. That's going to be a lot more beneficial for them. Restored justice instead of suspensions, detentions, again, this is something, we're looking into all of our code of conduct this summer and seeing what we could do as alternatives, you know, for, for students that are, that are kind of perpetual crime offenders or offenders to, to the code of conduct. So this is something we're looking into this summer. Staff would like PD on the Patriot Point system at the high school, so we will maybe have that as a, as a option for, for teachers in the PD, September, PD that we have. PD days should be devoted to department time, so now that we have, again, the increased number of half-day PD days throughout the school year next year, we can definitely do that at the secondary level. So just the other representatives that were there, special education supervisors spoke about how we are looking into number worlds as a supplement to reveal math at the elementary level. An Amplify K-2 reading program that is pretty much going to be adopted. I have to sit down Ms. Lot, and we're going to look at that shortly. Get that PO approved. A majority will be funded by ARP grants, which is, which is a great thing. And that, they're basically going out to observe special education classrooms, so we have resource teachers and ESL teachers going to observe special education classrooms enacting this program in Passaic, which would be a great thing, you know, and it's, something they're looking forward to. So we're getting new applications for classroom aides, which is good. You know, she said they're trickling in, and we're discussing, she just also discussed a new Senate bill that would change how specific learning disabilities are used to create IEPs. Mr. Vajani was the principal that was there. He was talking about the code of conduct as we are revising that over the summer. All the principals, PD in September will take all staff needs into consideration, which we always do. And Mr. Bartletta was there as a board member, and he said everything's going to be taken into consideration. So I just want to, what's that?
One second.
Yeah, you were very brief, yes.
Very succinct.
Yes, succinct, succinct, not brief. So suspensions for the month, you know, from last board meeting to this board meeting, we had three at the high school, none at the middle school, none at Huber Millridge, and none at Claritin. So I just want to thank the principals and assistant principals for doing a wonderful job. They have gone down significantly, so we are thankful for that. Last thing, I just want to congratulate the three retirees that are on the agenda. I've worked with all three pretty closely. Kim Wagner, I was her supervisor for a long time, a supervisor of science. She's going to be sorely missed. She was a wonderful, wonderful science teacher. Mary Amato, she's a wonderful person. She's, she's, I mean, I can't even say enough good things about how great of a teacher she is and how great she was for our students. And Lucy Beigler, one of the most brilliant ELA people that I know. She, she knew so much about reading, and she is going to be greatly missed as our, as one of our grade-level teachers at Huber Street. So, thank you.
Do you have an HIV report?
Yes.
Can I pass that to Joe? It's very important. Okay. Keep it open.
Sorry. One report, there was one HIV at, at the middle school, and it was not confirmed, not found.
It's not really important, you know.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the harassment, intimidation, and bullying findings as reported by the acting superintendent and are available at the administration offices for review.
Second.
Cold roll.
Can we dim the lights? Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolinino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Business Administrator, Board Secretary Report?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Good evening. Tonight, under Finance, we will be approving resolution R 5.08, refunding of our one remaining bond. The board is proposing to refinance a portion of its 2014 bond at a lower interest rate to produce tax savings, and that the bonds will be paid off in accordance with the original term and not to exceed. The authorization will be put, will be put on the board as a position to move forward once the 3% net present value savings is achieved. We will work with Arcaia to determine the ultimate purchase of the bonds, and Arcaia will negotiate the terms on behalf of the board. If the market does not cooperate, we will not be moving forward with this refunding of the bond. In addition, I would also like to recognize our admin staff on behalf of Dr. Reiser and myself. We have an administrative staff that without them, Dr. Reiser and I would not be able to get our jobs done as efficiently as we do. So thank you to all our staff at Central Office. Also, I would like to welcome Dr. Alfonso, and I look forward to working with you in the very near future. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Do we have anybody on the agenda?
I'm Stephen Fogarty. I'm the attorney for the district. This meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing items listed for approval on this agenda only. Residents wishing to speak on such items must sign the register provided for this purpose and are required to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by these individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals and will not be responsible for those comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during this public session should carefully consider their comments since they could be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number 1100, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel. the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue informally. Your cooperation is appreciated. Thank you.
Ron Maroz.
Ron Maroz, I live at 697 First Street in Seacaucus. I also teach here. For the last 14 years, Seacaucus Middle School Science Teacher. Graduated here from Claritin and from the high school. I have a little bit of a vested interest in, in what I'm about to say. I was one of the people that put in the correspondence about the hiring of Dr. Alfonso. I, I was hoping that you guys would have addressed some of that, so I wouldn't have to bring this up now. What I have to say, I just want you to know, Dr. Alfonso, this is not a, a knock on you personally. I do not know you, I'm sure you're going to do well, but what I have to ask these questions, the questions are the same questions everybody's asking right now. I'm hoping you can help us understand more of the decision process. The qualifications that you mentioned for Dr. Alfonso still don't answer the questions. We've had seven superintendents in the past 12 years. We've used, I think, used the same hiring agency this time as you did the last two that were very tumultuous. We have a resume, from what I know, could be totally incorrect, for Dr. Alfonso as a middle school principal for the past two years. That's fine, but we have high school principals that have been here a lot longer than that. I'm not sure if they were considered, perhaps they were. Dr. Reiser has been here for 20, 25 years, I'm not exactly sure. She's been a supervisor during that time, she's been a director of curriculum during that time, and she has been an acting superintendent for the last two years. She has been a superintendent. We would think we'd be looking for someone that has superintendent experience. I don't know why we didn't look for that. Obviously, you mentioned you had certain amount of candidates. If we didn't find somebody with the superintendent experience, why don't we keep looking? I guess we're not getting answers again. Another thing that we'd like to know, there's some photos, or a particular photo shown on personal social media, one in particular with Dr. Alfonso with another student, with a derogatory comment written on the front of that sweatshirt. Most of the people we're talking to, or better yet, everybody we've talked to, it's a little hard to understand how that's acceptable. Again, there could be a story behind it that we don't know, we're hoping for an understanding of it. We haven't heard anything from the board, I'm shocked. Thank you.
I had a few things written down. First, I'd just like to make a comment. Before we introduce a candidate and congratulate him and basically hand him the job, the proper procedure is to vote first. They have plenty of time to congratulate and have their say and talk to the public after that, but it's not official until you guys vote. It means it seemed like you already had the job, he doesn't until you vote, so that's number one. Number two, I'm not here to either say pro or con, because I know firsthand what you guys went through. The public doesn't. The amount of hours, the amount of applications, the discussions, hours and hours and hours. I personally would say thank you to you. I'm not saying I'm for or against your decision, I just, I want you to be recognized for the time you've put in, because you're not going to get in anywhere else. I do have an issue with the first part of your agenda. I think the salary is too high. I don't believe that kind of salary for a person that's inexperienced should walk in with that kind of salary, especially in a small, small school district that struggles with a budget. We should be very mindful of what we're giving out. I think that's a very high salary. The other thing, Joe, you mentioned about all the input, or lack of, it seemed like, from the community and staff and everyone else, but you did get some input. I'm just asking the question of the new board members, if you received the input from the prior board, because that might have had something to do with your decision. Remember in October, we sat down with school boards and gave them a list of recommendations? I'm just curious if the new members had that information. They, okay. With that, again, I'm not pro and con against it, but again, I understand the job you guys do. It's not easy making that decision, I'm sure it's not easy to be sitting here facing the public tonight with something that they're not aware of. You guys are, you sat through the meetings, you sat through the interviews, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Governance Committee personnel?
Want to report?
Yes.
Pertaining to governance, we discussed the various job positions, compensations for jobs done, extensions of coverage, and leave of absence, which we will be voting on tonight. We also discussed the extended school year program, the possibility of the Harlem Wizards Camp fundraiser, and a summer academic academy, which is a program that would be for grades K through five and funded through the ARP grant. We also discussed updating the current school year calendar due to the fact we have not utilized any of our inclement weather days. We also got a CUSAC update, which we did very well. It was mentioned that 75% of districts failed instruction and program for CUSAC this year, but Seacaucus passed. Our district is second in the county for student growth and standardized testing. Final score should be sent out in late April. With that, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt resolutions R 1 dot 01 through R 1 dot 18, and motion M 1 dot 01.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes, except I have to recuse myself from R 1.01.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Policy?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt resolutions R 2.01. That's it.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Education Committee, curriculum?
Amory, I typed this up and I'll email it to you, so you do not have to write anything, that's why I always have my lovely little thing right here, so, you're welcome, all right. So we started off the meeting with an excellent presentation by Ms. Felicia Lot, elementary supervisor to review and discuss the elementary acceleration program. The program will be offered for students in grades K to five. The program will begin on July 11th and run through July 27th. It will be Tuesday through Thursday from 8:30 to 12:30. The focus will remain the same as last year, addressing ELA and mathematics. Teachers will be paid through a grant, and Ms. Lot followed up with some updates on the K-12 reading series, Amplify CKLA, I think is the acronym for it?
Yes, it's K-2.
K-2, perfect, thank you. And we received some information pertaining to this ELA K-2 program. Ms. Lot reported positive feedback and excitement from the teachers and has a comprehensive plan for implementation and training. And again, this is covered through a grant, so thank you for that thorough overview. And next, Carrie Goldsack, the supervisor of special services, presented on the extended school year, which is the ESY program. Any student with an IEP is eligible for ESY to ensure maintenance of skills that are over extended breaks. Students may receive a modified amount of related services, which may include OTP to your speech. Fifty-nine students attended last year. It was staffed with seven teachers, 14 aides, two nurses, two speech therapists, and two alternates for coverage. For this year, the ESY program, there's a proposal for eight lead teachers, 10 shared aides, three one-to-one aides, and three one-to-one nurses. We are expecting the number of students for this year to be 60, which is relatively close to last year. Assignments, though, will be based on student enrollment and adjusted accordingly, obviously, depending on that, it might increase or decrease. Assignments would be based, I just read that sentence twice, thank you. Ms. Goldsacks, Ms. Goldsacks spoke with Ms. Zappalich regarding transportation, as there is a potential for approximately five buses being needed for this program, and that also will not be finalized until enrollment is. The last thing that we discussed was the super seniors to have a continuation of their current program, as it would prove to be more beneficial with access to community-based learning opportunities and life skills. Thank you for that presentation. And finally, we discussed some of the year-end field trips, including a trip to Lifetown, Hudson County Teen Arts, Project Graduation, and a few others. And with that, I'm going to stall while I get to the page to read this sentence. I would like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent, where are we, to adopt the resolutions R 3.01 through R 3.03.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Operations Committee, finance?
All right, and I'll do both finance and, and safety, buildings and grounds. Ms. Yeo already commented on most of our finance topics. Some of the buildings and grounds, as Sal was on, Mr. Choffey was on vacation, just some updates, all the stall locks and all the bathrooms have been addressed and fixed. Boys bathrooms, some new urinals have been ordered, and they will be replaced, and as our student representative said, all the clocks are in the process of being replaced, and, and I think are actually done by now, very close. In addition, we also, we also, in finance, received an excellent score on CUSAC, so thank you to, 100, we got a perfect score, because that's how we roll. And the, a big part of our meeting was, we got visited, we got in a meeting with the ESS Substitute Service.
Yes.
They were very informative. Right now, we are at state average of 40% coverage. They, they promised us a 75 to 80% coverage, so it's, it's a fantastic service. Right now, we are looking at a lot of the references. They handle a lot of, a lot of towns in our area, so we asked them for contacts, and we're going to do our due diligence and review them and make sure that the, that everything works, but it does look like a very promising start, so, more to come on that. So in, in conclusion, I would like to recommend to, I'd like to accept the recommendation of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt resolutions R 5.01 through R 5.09 as described below.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ethics, shared services?
The Shared Services Committee met on March 27th to discuss some topics. We discussed the town, we updated the town on the status of the installation of the greenhouse at the high school. Excuse me, my allergies are not good either. The town applied for and received a grant. The installation of the structure started this week, and we have been informed it has been completed. We updated the town on the budget. The budget was submitted to the county superintendent on March 20th and was approved on March 24th. We also discussed our transportation situation regarding the shortage of bus drivers. We informed the mayor that the district would be refunding the one remaining bond that we have left, which will be a generated savings to our taxpayers. We also informed the mayor that we would be having a new demographic study completed and need the town's assistance in working closely with Dr. Richard Grip of statistical forecasting to review the current and future growth of the town. We also discussed sharing the town's grant writer in helping the district apply for grants outside of the title grants that we currently receive. Thank you.
Legislation, no legislation, no athletics?
Athletics, we didn't have a meeting in athletics, but I, our kids are out there at spring sports, working very hard. I encourage everybody to get out there and support them, so, they're all out there practicing very hard, so I, I do encourage everybody to get out there and support the kids.
Technology, no? Communications, do we have anything? No? Circ, no? Anybody for? Jack McStowe?
Let's meet again, I like this seat, I'm coming often. Okay, I like hearing you say it, Stephen.
Mr. McStowe, if you would just indulge me for a moment. Mr. Maroz raised an issue with regard to a posting on social media that the board was aware of, certainly prior to this evening, and the board, as part of its due diligence, did look into that posting and determined that, that posting, that that posting represented an awards ceremony outside of the venue of, of our superintendent, superintendent appointee, and that our superintendent appointee was there as a distinguished guest and speaker. So hopefully that clarifies the issue and responds to your concern. And now, Mr. McStowe. This meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing any subject matter that is pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the Seacaucus Public School District. Residents wishing to speak on such items must sign the register provided for this purpose and are required to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals, not that I need to say that to you, Mr. McStowe. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals, will not be responsible for those comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during the public session should carefully consider their comments since they could be held personally liable for any statements that they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number 1100, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter unless it can confirm that the matter has been brought to the attention of the administration for a resolution before they address the issue. Thank you for the indulgence.
Okay, Jack McStowe, 345 Center Avenue. I think I'll come up once a month, just to have you read that. Okay, just earlier today, I received a text message from Kathy O'Connell, and I'm going to express her thoughts and my sentiments probably the same. Two years ago, I came to you, the district was in trouble, we had a problem, and I came to you and said, "Dr. Reiser, would you help us out?" And you did. You stepped forward, you took the job, for two years, you've done a great job. I want to thank you for that, and I think the community is going to thank you for that also. Uh...
names, addresses, and subject matter. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals. Not that I need to say that to you, Mr. McStowe. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals, will not be responsible for those comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during the public sessions should carefully consider their comments since they could be held personally liable for any statements that they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number 1100, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter unless it can confirm that the matter has been brought to the attention of the administration for a resolution before they address the issue. Thank you for the indulgence.
Okay. Jack McStowe, 345 Center Avenue. I think I'll come up once a month just to have you read that. Okay. Just earlier today, I received a text message from Kathy O'Connell and I'm going to express her, her thoughts and my, my sentiments probably the same. Two years ago, I came to you. The district was in trouble. We had a problem. And I came to you and said, "Dr. Reiser, would you help us out?" And you did. You stepped forward. You took the job. For two years, you've done a great job. I want to thank you for that. And I think the community is going to thank you for that also. And Kathy wanted me to express the same thing. I have to assume it's very tough for you to be sitting here tonight, but I give you more credit. The other issue I have tonight is that last year, there was a lot of, I would say, criticism of the board, of things we did and didn't do. And I just have a question. We're in April. Have you guys done your board ethics yet? Have you done your board ethics training yet? It's April. I mean, I got criticized a lot for the training that was going on. I'm just asking if we've done our school lessons yet? It's yes or no. I mean, not yet. Okay. Do you know when you're going to do it?
Forty years over.
Forty years over. So, we have three brand-new board members have not received ethics training yet. Okay. So, if they get in trouble, it's not their fault.
Are you talking about Governance one?
No, I'm talking about ethics training. We go through it every year. Last year, I think we did it in January or February. But I guess it's not an issue to the board members who made it an issue last year. That's, right? And the other question I have is, have we heard, had a CIRC meeting yet?
We were waiting on completing the superintendent search before we started discussing CIRC. So, we're at that point now.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Comments?
I'd like to, I'd like to say something. As somebody who doesn't sit in on a lot of the meetings for the superintendent search, I'd, I'd like to thank all of the committee members that were, that were on that, which is everybody else. Because they, I personally know the work that they put into this. And it is a lot of work. It was a lot of time. It was a lot of sacrifice. And that's mainly the reason why we haven't completed everything is because of the amount of work that they put in for that. Now that the search is over and we can, we can move forward and get all the, the ethics training and all the other issues you brought up and get that done. But I do want to thank everybody for their work and, and time that they put into that.
I just want to start by thanking Dr. Reiser for all the great work she has been doing as acting superintendent. She took over at a very difficult time and helped us get through a pandemic and many other challenges that our district faced. And as I said to her earlier, she was the right person at the right time. When our district needed a hero, she answered the call. And thank you. I also want to congratulate Dr. Eric Alfonso for being voted in as our new superintendent. I look forward to working with him. During the interview process, he showed himself to be well-informed, a creative mind, and an out-of-the-box thinker. He also appeared well-organized and someone that enjoys taking our new challenges. So, with that, I would like to present to him his first challenge. I'm putting you to work already. As you know, our district is expanding. We are, you know, a lot more students are coming into our school. And in the past, it's been a lot of distractions, including a global pandemic. But now, I think we want to focus on that. And I hope when you come in, you can hit the ground running. This is an issue that I'm very passionate about. And I just want to keep that, keep all of our eyes on the ball on that. This is a great town, as you said, and a lot of people want to move in. There is a lot of development going on. And those developers are not going to wait for a superintendent to get settled in. The families moving into those developments are not going to wait for a superintendent to get settled in. And the resources those students are going to need are not going to wait for a new superintendent to settle in. And so, I hope you accept that challenge. I know you will. And I think you will help lead us to solutions that we are seeking. I urge all of us to give him our support in this challenge and all other challenges that will come before our district that he will need, that we will need him to lead us through. And I'm sure there will be some, as there are in every district. The solutions will always be there as long as we all work together. And I look forward to doing my part in any way I can. And once again, thank you so much, Dr. Reiser, and congratulations, Dr. Alfonso. Thank you.
Dr. Alfonso, I just want to officially welcome you to the team. I know the entire board is looking forward to working with you and hoping we can make some great strides and bring test scores in the school district back to where it's supposed to be. With that, can I get a motion to close?
Motion.
Motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.